Good afternoon and welcome. Welcome to the deans, the faculty, student leaders, and everyone that has joined us today. The March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of Tennessee State University Board of Trustees is now called to order. Do I need to read this electronic? Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, first, I would like to ask Dean Stevenson to come forward and offer us a word of prayer, please.
Let's bow. God, we thank you for this moment. We thank you for this opportunity to serve. We pray that you continue to bless Tennessee State University, our faculty, staff, students, alumni, the entire community. We pray that you bless this board with wisdom and with longevity, God, to continue to serve and to give back. We thank you for the work that they do. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you, Dean Stevenson. Okay. As you will note in your board material for today's board meeting, we have several items on the agenda today. We look forward to addressing several significant matters of importance to this board and the institution's evolution and success. The next item listed in your agenda is roll call and declaration of a quorum. At this time, we need to call the rolls. Secretary of Penelton, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Cole.
Present.
Trustee Martin.
Present.
Trustee Corbille. President. Trustee Andre Johnson.
Present.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Present.
Trustee Lewis.
Present.
Trustee McKenzie. Trustee Pinnick.
Present.
Trustee Wimberly.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Board members, if you cannot hear us speak to the other board members, please state so now. For each board member participating electronically, please identify any individuals who are present at the location from which you are participating. This meeting serves as a summary of all the action that we have taken during today in various committee meetings. The first action item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda items, the minutes of the November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three board meeting, audit committee meeting, finance and budget committee meeting, academic affairs and student affairs committee meeting, and executive committee meeting. You have in your March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four board materials the minutes for each of these meetings. During their meetings, each committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of their respective meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the consent agenda items as contained in the board material for the March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four board meeting. Secretary of Penelton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Corbille.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie. Trustee Pinnick.
Aye.
Okay, the motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is the audit committee report. As the audit committee chair, I will report the actions and the other items from today's audit committee meeting. The audit committee met today to act on one item and discuss or receive reports on two items and go into executive session to discuss matters deemed confidential under state law. The audit committee had a comprehensive discussion about internal and external audits and outstanding audit issues. The audit committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three audit committee meeting minutes, which were approved by the full board in the consent agenda. Also, it went on the record to say that we received the board, we, the board, received a draft copy of findings for year in June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two on three fourteen twenty-four. A copy was emailed to me, three thirteen twenty-four, and I've not had an opportunity to review the information. The board will not take action until I as chair and the TSU administration has had an opportunity to review the findings and the full six thirty twenty-two report, along with a response from management. If necessary, the chair will instruct for a call meeting to review the findings and the report prior to the next scheduled board meeting. That concludes the audit report. The next item on the agenda is the finance and budget committee report. The chair recognizes the finance and budget committee chair or designee who will report the actions and information items from today's financial budget committee meeting.
Thank you, Chair Cole. The finance and budget committee met today to act on two items and receive reports on eight items. The finance and budget committee voted to recommend to the full board approval of the November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three finance and budget committee min- meeting minutes, which were approved by the full board in the consent agenda items. Additionally, President Glover and her team provided reports on the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four institutional revised budget, a construction and facilities update, a master plan update, a finance and budget report, a report on the consumer relations strategic plan, an enrollment update, a merit scholarship update, an update on the personnel action plan, and a report from the information technology replacement plan. The finance and budget committee also voted to recommend to the full board approval of the FY two thousand and twenty-five compensation plan. You have in your March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four board materials related to this agenda item. On behalf of the finance and budget committee, I move to approve the FY two thousand and twenty-five compensation plan as contained in the board materials for the March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four board meeting.
Is there a second?
One.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the FY two thousand and twenty-five compensation plan as contained in the board materials for March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four board meeting. Secretary of Penelton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Corbille.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Pinnick.
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Trustee Cole, that concludes the finance and budget committee report.
Thank you, and I appreciate the financial budget committee's work on behalf of the board. Again, I want to say that all the heavy lifting is done in the committee meetings, and we're reporting out a summary of that activity in this particular meeting.
Chair Cole, on behalf of the faculty and staff, we'd like to thank the board and the president for the compensation plan. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the academic affairs and student affairs committee report. The chair recognizes the academic affairs and student affairs committee chair, trustee Martin, to report on the action items and other items from today's academic affairs and student affairs committee meeting.
Thank you, Chair Cole. The academic affairs and student affairs committee met today to consider and vote on three agenda items and to receive reports on four other agenda items. The academic affairs and student affairs committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three academic affairs and student affairs committee meeting minutes, which were approved by the full board in the consent agenda items. The committee also voted to recommend to the full board the approval of a new academic program in the College of Education, a certificate in teaching English to speakers of other languages, and an academic program modification to change the academic program degree designation from the Masters of Art in Education to the Masters of Science Degree in Human Performance and Sports Sciences. In addition, the committee received a SACS accreditation update and report on academic affairs and student affairs. The committee also heard a report on the proposed board resolution pertaining to the student trustee position. As I previously noted, the academic affairs and student affairs committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of a new academic program in the College of Education, a certificate in teaching English to speakers of other languages. On behalf of the academic affairs and student affairs committee, I move to approve a new academic program in the College of Education, a certificate in teaching English to others of other languages as contained in board materials for the March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve a new academic program in the College of Education, a certificate in teaching English to speakers of other languages contained in the board materials for the March fourteen, two thousand and twenty-four board meeting. Secretary of Penelton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Corbille.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Pinnick.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
The motion is approved.
Thank you. The academic affairs and student affairs committee also voted to recommend to the full board an academic program modification to change the academic program degree designation from the Masters of Art in Education to the Master of Science Degree in Human Performance and Sports Sciences. On behalf of the academic affairs and student affairs committee, I move to approve an academic program modification to change the academic program degree designation from the Master of Arts in Education to the Master of Science Degree in Human Performance and Sports Science as contained in board materials for the March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve an academic program modification. Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve an academic program modification to change the academic program degree designation from the Master of Arts in Education to Master of Science Degree in Human Performance and Sports Science as contained in the board materials for the March fourteen, two thousand and twenty-four board meeting. Secretary of Penelton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Corbille.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Pinnick.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
The motion is approved.
Thank you, Chair Cole. That concludes my report.
And thank you, trustee Martin, and other members of the academic affairs and student affairs committee for all the great work that you have done on behalf of the board. The next item on the agenda is the executive committee report. As the chair of the board and the chair of the executive committee, I will report the action and information items from today's executive committee meeting. The executive committee met today to discuss and vote on one action item and hear reports on four items. The executive committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the November sixteen, twenty twenty-three executive committee meeting minutes, which were approved by the full board in the consent agenda. The executive committee also heard a report on the status of the board resolution items as updated on the president's search process, an update on pending legislation affecting TSU, and a report from Secretary Penelton. Did I miss something? Yeah. Okay. All right, the next item on the agenda is the report of the status of the board resolution items. This is an information item, so no vote is required. Dr. Glover or General Evans, which would one of you please provide the report? While General Evans is coming, this is a report that we provide for each, at each board meeting in compliance with our commitment to the state of Tennessee in that we would address each one of these items on an ongoing basis.
Yes. If you go to slide one after the cover slide, you, Chair Cole, you directed last time that I make these into slides, and so it is. It's right behind you.
Yes, I can see it.
Okay, oh, I didn't see that.
I can see it right here. Thank you.
All right, got it. Okay, first item, the TSU Board of Trustees is committed to actively engaging in the enhanced oversight of the TSU's operational and fiscal practices, including working more closely with TSU's management and operational fiscal areas. That process is ongoing and went on today. Second item, TSU Board Trustees Executive Committee will examine the board's current committee structure to ensure the appropriate number and focus of its committees and provide recommendations to the full board if warranted. That process is ongoing today, and by evidence of the day, you can see that different trustees have oversight of the committees for scholarship, housing, budget, and finance, as well as audit. Three, to further strengthen the board's overall effectiveness, the board will continue to work with the Association of Governing Boards of universities and colleagues, including with its self-assessment process to enhance the board's operational effectiveness. The chair met with, and trustees met with the governing boards on thirteenth September to view the board guidance. Slide two, or the next slide, please. Four. Do you want me to read all these? Okay. Four, the TSU Board of Trustees hereby directs the TSU administration to provide an annual scholarship plan to the board and commencing the board's June twenty-three meeting, present reports at the board's regular meetings pertaining to the number and value of all scholarships offered and the number of signed scholarships acceptance offers, notwithstanding the fact that the scholarship presentation will be made at the March two thousand and twenty-three meeting. The TSU administration shall ensure that it provides a copy of the annual scholarship plan to the Tennessee Higher Education Commission for the academic years two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five. That was accomplished this week. The letter for twenty-five was sent to THEC. Number five, the TSU board, so that should actually, four should be actually green, but because that happened before I got this slide in, it's amber, so it's no longer working. It's done. Number five, the TSU Board of Trustees directs the TSU management to provide housing application and enrollment application data to the board commencing at the board's June two thousand and twenty-three meeting and thereafter at its March, June, and September board meeting, notwithstanding the fact that an enrollment data report will be made at the March two thousand and twenty-three meeting. The TSU management shall also provide a copy of said housing and enrollment application data to the Tennessee Higher Education for academic years two thousand and twenty-three and twenty-four and twenty-five and to the State Building Commission upon request. That has been accomplished. Six, the TSU Board of Trustees directs the TSU management to provide enrollment classification data to the board commencing at the board's June two thousand and twenty-three meeting and thereafter at its March, June, and September board meetings, notwithstanding the fact that an enrollment presentation will be made at the March two thousand and twenty-three meeting, and you can see in that block, the enrollment classification data was also briefed or presented during my presentation of the enrollment update accomplished. Number seven, the TSU Board of Trustees is committed to ensuring that TSU management has sufficient and appropriate personnel to operate TSU in a productive and efficient manner, and to that end, hereby directs President Glover to conduct a review of personnel, including but not limited to organizational structure, performance, staffing within units, and present a personal action plan, which shall include a plan of action for filling all vacant and interim positions to the board at its June meeting. That plan has been presented at the fourteenth September board, initial, the initial plan. The plan was presented during sixteenth November, and it was planned, was submitted today with actions on the objective. Number eight, the TSU Board of Trustees further directs President Glover to retain in an expeditious manner a chief operating officer, a director of construction management, or similar title position, and conduct an in-depth review of enrollment management operations that the COO is here. The director of construction has been hired. Also note, the AV for custom relations was hired, and an enrollment assessment has been accomplished by myself, and they're, they're in good shape. Number nine, the TSU Board of Trustees directs TSU management to present to the finance and budget committee for its prior approval specified financial budget changes that exceed ten percent, including scholarships, and directs TSU management to present to the board for its approval a policy consistent with this directive. That process is ongoing. Number ten, the TSU Board of Trustees, in concurrence with the Comptroller's Report, shall take all appropriate measures, including having its special, its board's special committee on housing work closely and expeditiously with TSU management to add at least two new resident halls to the university housing inventory. With conversation with Will Rafford, it's still awaiting SBC approval for those two dormitories. Number eleven, the TSU Board of Trustees hereby directs the TSU management to provide for at least the next two fiscal years a report at each board meeting addressing the university's practices and responsiveness regarding student-related communications, including in the areas of enrollment, housing, and financial aid. You heard that today. Number twelve, the TSU Board of Trustees, through its respective board committees, shall monitor and review adherence to the directives and matters contained in this resolution and directs TSU management to present a report at its quarterly meetings, updating the board on TSU's adherence to the directives contained in this resolution, and that is also ongoing and occurring. And that is my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, General Evans, and as we committed to the state, we would do this on a monthly basis, and it has been an ongoing document each month, each quarterly, I'm sorry, not monthly, quarterly at the board meetings. That has been done. We appreciate that report from you and the coding so that we know what's going, what has, is happening. Also, I'd like to mention that the details from these reports have been provided as late as today in the committee meetings, full details of, for example, enrollment, those type of items. Thank you, General Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, where am I now? Okay. The next action I made on the agenda is the approval of a board resolution on a student trustee's board resolution. We are going to, we have asked trustee Johnson to work with trustee Wimberly and...
Yeah, we just need to make the motion for the board to delegate authority to trustee Andre Johnson to work with the student trustee, Sean Wimberly, to finalize the student board resolution on behalf of the board.
Could not have said that better myself. Okay.
Second.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I, can I mention to the public what the resolution is about?
Yes.
Chair Cole, yeah. So just for on the record, this resolution is being built to help enhance and improve the efficiency of the student trustee, and it's matters for the board trustees. So when it comes to the research and the work that the student trustee does on behalf of the board trustees, when it comes to connecting with the student body about what needs to be done from a board level, so I just want to thank the board for making this come to reality. I do have students in the room, I can ask them to stand, who have worked with me when it comes to building this proposal and getting, trying to show the university that, that the student trustee needs this committee, needs to have the ability for this committee to be put in place for years to come. So I want to thank them publicly. We have, we have worked very hard, just to get all these materials and just showing the campus what the student trustee committee can do. So thank you all, and I look forward to establishing this.
Sean, can you tell us their names?
Absolutely. So I'll start from the, from the right round. You want to say Eden or Reese? Which one you prefer? Okay, so I call her Reese, but her, her name is Eden Walker. To her right is Devon Storms, and to her right is Mr. Sampson Cook, and in front of him is Cameron, what's her last name, Cameron? Cameron Nelson. And, and these, and I have worked with them for some time now. They're different majors, and a lot of them, I think you are sophomores and juniors, so they are, they are very dear to me. But thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Wimberly, for your foresight in this matter. At this point in time, I think I need a second on that motion, please.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to establish the process of evaluating and developing the resolution for the student trustee involvement. Secretary of Penelton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Corbille.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Pinnick.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Okay, the motion is approved. The next item, did I miss something? Just correct, the next item on the agenda is the president's report. The chair recognizes President Glover, who will provide a report on the agenda item.
Thank you, Chair Cole, members of the Board of Trustees, and to all who are present. I thank you for the opportunity to provide the president's report. First, have executive summary that tells you that TSU financial position remains strong. We have an endowment over a hundred million. The research funding exceeded a hundred million. This is second record that we've had. We are working hard for, to get from our two to our one Carnegie Research Classification. We've charted that path. We're well on our way. Currently, there's no HBCU that is our one school. We have a handful that's slated to be, that's in this process. We have a couple that may be ahead of TSU, but we're well on our way to getting there. Our typical budget presentation made to the Senate, the state senate, we go through the audits we had, the legislation affecting TSU, then the discussion with the $2.1 billion underfunding. There's just some good news about TSU. We were ranked the best online masters in DC. I won't go through all of them, but just want you to see that we're, we're continuing to make a name for ourselves in a national market, international market, and we're just really proud of what our students are doing in this space, as well as our faculty. I did want to mention something about Dr. Melton, know if she's on there or not, but Dr. Robert Melton, our provost, has become the national expert on artificial intelligence in higher education. She was recently invited up to Harvard University and met with them and gave them ideas. I thought that, that TSU is really right, you can go to Harvard, they invite you up to Harvard and ask you, what do you think about this? Let's go to the next one. So again, the first one said we were strong financially, just went through that before. CFI good, best financial business we've ever been in. Next, there's legislation that's affecting the TSU board. The first one pertains to vacating the board or reconstituting the board with the same number of members and the same structure. It passed Governor Ops, and then it passed Senate Finance yesterday. The House is still going on ongoing discussions, trying to reach a board, some type of compromise. Next. The next one is proposed temporarily moving, well, governing landing spot for any state university board that is vacated or that is sunsetted. And so we have testified to this legislation, I met with legislators with the governor regarding this issue with this legislation, as well as want to vacate the board. So it's passed in the House press. No vote is yet scheduled in the House. Full committee is passed in the Senate already, so we're just waiting to see where this is going to land. Okay, now I made a presentation yesterday to the Senate. They asked each school to come and present their budget. We were the last one to present our budget. So we had no new money that we asked for in the budget. Next, but I do want to tell them that I, I made a point to them in the meeting that while this was not a meeting where we were going to discuss the $544 million, of which we have received, or 215 million has been provided, there's 294 we're still in discussions about, as well as the $2.1 billion. But I said that was not the agenda for yesterday. They wanted to know what was in the government's budget. We tried to stick to that at that meeting yesterday, but we are having discussions with various legislators about the $2.1 billion, as well as the 294 million that we have not yet received. So here's what presented to the governor, to the Senate Education Committee yesterday. We had told, the total provided for TSU in new funding, five million, 5.1 million, the last number down there, three million in new funding that comes from Alcon's growth funding, the three percent salary pool, as well as health insurance premiums. Then we got $93,000 for agricultural units and another two million for electrical upgrade. So it was in the government's budget for us for this coming fiscal year. Now, I gave us some examples of how TSU had used the budget allocation that we had received. We implemented plans, as I mentioned, advanced from our two to our one research category. We advanced our artificial intelligence. We advanced our artificial intelligence, then we expended earmarks on how we're going to spend the $250 million, and some has already been spent via infrastructure improvements. Next. So why is it so important becoming an R1 institution? Because, one, we can attract top-tier faculty, we can top, we can attract top, high caliber students, we can get more external fundings, more commercialization and technology transfer. Just we can increase our partnerships and our collaboration that we have in the corporate world, as well as in academic world. Then the artificial intelligence, I mentioned with Dr. Robert Melton, then what HPC, what TSU is doing in HBCU world, as well as the non-HBCU world. We have artificial intelligence for all summit, national summit that we're hosting. I mean, we're just really pleased that, you know, this time, I guess, a few years ago, it was coding. TSU was taking the lead in coding with Apple and going around the country with the coding. Dr. Melton's prayers at it for it. Now it's artificial intelligence. And so we're getting, I, I think a week to 10 days won't go by, doesn't go by, that someone doesn't call and talk to us about our artificial intelligence initiatives. So we're really glad about that. Now I mentioned how the $250 million that was provided was being spent. As you can see, there are about 13 items on this list that make up the whole of $250 million that the governor put in his budget on the stage. And so the first six on there have either, we've started those, they've been committed. There's, the others, the last seven on there, we're still working through those, we're working with TBR, working with our management here and the university, just to make sure we, we have that timetable on target. So we've been good stewards of the money that we have received. We'd like to make sure that it's known that we've been good stewards of the funds that we receive. Next. So I want to get to status of the audits. We had the, the three main one audits we had. The forensic audit was started early August, and TSU has provided all the requested information to forensic auditors and made a report, I'm sorry, a report expected later this month. I do want to put on the record, as I mentioned, mentioned to the Senate yesterday, that there was a question pertaining to forensic audit delays. I can state to you on this record that we have not been responsible for any delays pertaining to the forensic audit. I can tell you, they have shared with us that they would change the due date of the audit a couple of times, but I'm absolutely certain, I don't think any one of those forensic auditors ever stated it was because of TSU. In fact, the forensic auditors were very complimentary of how timely they received information from us. We provide them over 100,000 records and responses. So I believe the statement made some additional requests, but not only have we responded to initial requests, we responded to the follow-up requests. And so finally, I want to say that we met with the forensic auditors every week for seven months. And so I want to put to bed any inaccurate statements that TSU did not provide information to forensic auditors as requested, that is totally inaccurate, false, and unfair. So let me get up there on the underfunding. We could go back, there were a couple. Go back, go back. One more. Now, financial statement audit, for year end of June 30, 2022, is currently being performed. We did some, some measures to correct some prior audit findings with an independent CPA firm to confirm these corrections. We've enhanced our financial management team. We recommended policies to ensure that bank reconciliation are performed, they're reviewed monthly. We just upgraded and enhanced a whole financial reporting area. We have a TSAC audit that's close to 80% complete. We responded to all the items in the initial report, and we're just currently responding to the follow-up questions and additional documentation that's needed. And we're really digging all the way in on that report. I appreciate the board's help and the board discussions we've had regarding this audit. So you are helping us to, to get this audit done, so we appreciate that. Next page. Now I want to give you a status of the underfunding, TSU. I gave this earlier, and I was asked to just bring some parts of it back. There are two levels of underfunding. A lot of discussion has not taken place publicly in the legislature about the underfunding this session, but has not gone away. The state joint land grant funding study committee has an underfunding finding of an amount, as well as a federal joint study by the United States Department of Agriculture, as well as Department of Education. So I'm just taking a moment to go through each one. The state of Tennessee first came up with an amount that was owed of $544 million, $315,367 from the period 1957 to 2021. Next. And then I just listed the, how it came up to there from 1957, the amounts all the way to 2021, how much was underfunded when compared to other land-grant universities in the state of Tennessee. That was $544 million. So we have, they were provided $250 million. I showed you how the $250 million is being used. This is how the remaining $294 million is being used. As you can see, some, some big projects on there that we're hopeful that we can get the funding that's, that was underfunded, so maybe now we can get that back on the agenda. We spent a lot of time at this session going through the boards and what's going on with TSU and what's at the legislature. A lot, a lot of time was not contributed to and allocated to the funding, the underfunding of TSU. So hopefully we can get back on that, that underfunding initiative. Now let's go through the, to the next one. So then the federal government said, there were so many complaints by presidents, chancellors of land-grant universities, they decided to do a deeper dive and see just how much underfunding has taken place among land-grant institutions. I, I, I believe there are some, some review going on of other, of non-land grants, but what's on the record now, there is underfunding of land-grant institutions based on a per-student basis. TSU led the list. They listed by each school, and TSU, there were three that had around $2 million. TSU, Rough County, AT and FAMU, had the highest amount of around $2 billion owed to HBCUs. Next. And so you can see, it was done on a per-student basis. An underfunded letter was sent to Governor Bill Lee for Tennessee State University, and That is separate from the earlier calculation of the $544.
Please mute your phone. Everyone on the phone, please mute your phone.
So it's two separate parts of money that, where TSU has been underfunded. One is the state level that's been recognized by state, members of the legislature, $544 million. And then the federal government amount that was underfunded, sent to Governor Bill Lee of $2.1 billion. Next. I did show...
Can everyone mute their phone on, mute their phones, on the phones calling in?
I did show a calculation of one year. I'm not sure who this is. I did show a calculation of one year and said how it was done, and I went to Washington to determine how this was done. And just for one year, for the last year they did it for 2020, it shows the difference and on a per-student basis, took all the appropriations for UT and for TSU, and divided by the number of students. And you can see the amount per student for UT land grant was $15,770, and for TSU was $8,304. The difference per student, $6,773. So if we take that for the 7,615, 7,615 students we had in 2020, that was down due to COVID, that gives you $51 million just for 2020 alone. So if we take that for the, go to the next one, for the whole year, again.
Trustee McKenzie.
Again, advancing. So total underfunding was $51 for that one year, and then underfunding calculated for all 33 years. The total amount is $2 billion, $2,147 million. Go to the next one. So if you look at every year, you can see what was done every single year, the underfunding from the federal study. That's the two points, how we got the $2.1 billion, did it for every single year. So in closing, go to the next one. Just wanted to see, we're asking for a restoration plan. The first year, we're going to ask $285 million. They have $415 million for the next two years, next three years, and the last year for the $512 million. So that's our, our request, that we are asking to see if we could get some of the underfunding that's owed to TSU. Again, unfortunately, this semester, well, me, sorry, this legislative session, much time was spent discussing the board, discussing TSU, discussing vacating the board, whether we're going to go on the T hack. A lot of time was spent on that, and not nearly enough time was spent on the underfunding of TSU. So we hope we get that back on the agenda, so we can show how these funds are needed. And we're showing year one, we want to continue to go, our plans for our two to our one, with some, some other plans, how to spend the $285 million. So again, to reiterate, there are two levels of underfunding. Underfunding is determined by the state land grant commission, funding the study commission of $544,315,367, and underfunding is determined federally by the joint study of the United States Department of Agriculture, the US Department of Education, $2.1 billion. So that's the level of underfunding that we are in this state of Tennessee. So I'm hoping we can finish the other discussions that are going on at the Capitol, so we can really get back to the underfunding discussion, or do it concurrently. They're not mutually exclusive. So that's where we are. We do have a plan for recovery. Students have talked to me regularly, I think just this week, trustee Wimberly has talked to me about it. I mean, the student leaders have talked to me. They're wondering what's going on with the underfunding and all the rumors we're hearing about our underfunding, about our governors. What can they do to help in this situation, to help get underfunded, to keep us together as a board and university? And so we're currently developing an additional timeline and plan for recovery, receiving the remaining funds owed to TSU, and the funding we use for student success, for program enhancements, for campus improvements. That'll be a priority as we try to again enhance from our two, advance from our two to our one. That's our big deal right now. Finally, because the president's a transition, I'm developing a transition plan that covers the various areas. So that when a new president comes in, there'll be something on his or her desk, and that would help as a, I guess, I'm asking these cabinet members to prepare a transition document consisting, just the role and services provided by your area, their particular areas, education units, the budget, ongoing issues. So we're hoping that we'll get that together and be able to hand it to the board chair or to the president herself or himself. So thank you very much. That is the president's report, and again, I appreciate your support, and I look forward to continue to work through my last few days here. Thank you.
Thank you, President Glover. The final item on the agenda is the board chair's report. I first have a resolution that I'd like to present for board approval. If you would bear with me while I read it, please. TSU Board of Trustees proclamation, I said resolution proclamation. On April 14, 2024, the International Sorority, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, will honor TSU President Glover for her service as president of Tennessee State University and her contributions to the AKA Sorority, including her proud service as the international president of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. President Glover's contributions and service to the AKA Sorority has benefited Tennessee State University in many ways, including scholarship donations, networking, and development of relationships on a national and international basis, and business and nonprofit-related donations. In recognition of this honor, the TSU Board of Trustees, when approved, proclaims April 14, 2024, as Dr. Glenda Glover Day at Tennessee State University. While we plan to have other recognitions and acknowledgements as we move closer to Dr. Glover's retirement from the university, we want to issue this proclamation in connection with the event that will be hosted on April 14 of 2024. I move for the approval of the proclamation.
Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Secretary Penning, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Corbell.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Pennick.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
At this point in time, I would like to present a few comments from the chair. First, I want to thank the members of the Board of Trustees for your very hard work. I'm very proud of what we have done. There have been challenges, and we have either addressed them, or we're in the process of carrying out resolutions at this moment. I am not aware of a university with no problems. While there is always room for improvement, I'm very proud of the report from AGB, which stated that we are an effective board. AGB trained us on behalf of the state, and we also had an additional session with AGB. I've been fortunate to serve on many boards and committees locally and nationally. Two of the most impressive ones to me that I've served on was the TSAC Audit Committee and the FDIC Advisory Board. TSU's Board of Trustees is rewarding, hardworking, and a very intelligent group of individuals. Just to mention a few of our, the TSU Board of Trustees and administration's accomplishments, we completed the training by AGB, the Associates of Governing Boards. We've improved the finances. The COO was named and committed, as committed to by, as committed to the state of Tennessee that we would name one. We've significantly increased the endowment. The Director of Construction was hired, which was another commitment that was made to the state. There have been services that have been automated in the finance process. We have a very strong reserve. We've established a very effective housing committee, which was led by trustee Pennock, and we thank you. We held the president and the administration accountable. We've got an endowment that exceeds $100 million. During the last six months, we underwent five audits. I want to thank the finance department, Dr. Allen and your staff. I know that basically you were working seven days a week. I know that I called you many times at night, and I appreciate you accepting my call. Also, we've established several new academic role programs as soon as today, as trustee Martin reported on in her report. We are a leader in AI. I think Dr. Glover mentioned that Harvard University called to Nashville, Tennessee, to Tennessee State University for Dr. Melton to come and talk to them. We've established and conducted at each board meeting a review of the items that we received in a Comptroller's State Report. I made a commitment to the state that we would follow through, and that we have been doing. When General Evans made his report, he asked me, did I want him to read each item? Yes, I did, because I wanted to make sure that we were on record, that each and every item that was in that memorandum of understanding is being addressed. Did an excellent job of putting together that report. Thank you, sir. Each item is discussed at each board meeting that we have. This was not just something for today. We've enhanced the enrollment data that is presented, that was presented to us today also in a report. I'm going to ask the board, and I know they're committed, just as I am, that we will continue to work to accomplish the best for Tennessee State University, because we are the Board of Trustees for Tennessee State University until we are no longer the Board of Trustees for Tennessee State University. Again, to each one of my fellow members of the Board of Trustees, I thank you. I thank you for your hard work. I know that you have worked not just at these meetings, but in nights and on weekends. And to the administration, I sincerely appreciate everything that you have done to move this university farther. I can say with all honesty that I believe, from the time that this initial board was established till now, we have made tremendous strides, and whenever we leave, I do believe we're leaving it better than what we found. Thank you. Is there any additional business?
Give it all a round of applause.
Yeah, let me give a round of applause to my, to my fellow board members here, please, everyone. And the staff, the staff, the deans, everyone that is here. Is there any additional business? If there's no additional business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Secretary Penning, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Corbell.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Pennick.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
The motion is approved. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.